Council of Commissioners regular meeting for Wednesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty to order. We have roll call, please.
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have twelve present and zero absent.
Excellent, thank you. Chief Lieutenant, would you like to lead us in the prayer?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night. As we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow, correct our thoughts where it's indeed so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens.
Thank you. Next we'll have approval of the minutes of the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting and August fifth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the July fifteenth and August fifth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting.
Second, we have a motion made in second to approve the minutes of the July fifteenth meeting and the August fifth meeting. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote?
Uh, Mr. Chief-
We don't have a- I don't have a poll. Ask people. Okay, two minutes.
One second. Mr. Chief Executive, on this one, can we just do a verbal vote on it?
Yes, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have one item not addressed on the agenda. So we have to ask for the suspension of the rules for communication twenty twenty dash three four nine. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In accordance with the provisions of section six of rule six of the Rules of Order of the Council of Commissioners of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow communication twenty twenty dash three four nine. Communication twenty twenty dash three four nine is a communication from Public Works Director Mark Neary requesting that the council authorize the chief executive to sign two agreements with Northwestern Energy for the construction of gas lines for the bus wash and the bus garage at the new location for the city-county of Butte Silver Bow. The communication was not submitted by the deadline for the August nineteenth because the agreements were not received prior to such deadline. Based on the foregoing and in order to allow this matter to be acted on the agenda, I make a motion to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing communication twenty twenty dash three four nine on the agenda.
Second, we have a motion made in second to approve the suspension of the rules for communication twenty twenty dash three four nine added to tonight's agenda. Anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? It's still waiting for it.
Mr. Chief Executive, IT's still working on that.
Okay. We can do a roll call vote on this one too if you would like. Will everyone in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, twelve to nothing, thank you. We will take care of that communication after the consent agenda this evening. Under the chief executive's report, I don't have much to say tonight. On vacation this week supposedly getting some work done around the yard and the house and it hasn't been going very well. But just like to remind everyone, school would be starting soon. It has started up at Montana Tech and we just want everyone to be extremely aware of all the CDC regulations and wearing a mask when in public and keeping a six-foot distance in place so that we do not have any further huge outbreaks. Please adhere to the rules. That's it for that. So now we can go to public comment on any item on the agenda. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. We will open up the phone lines and see if, if there's anybody there. We'll give it a minute. I do have a few letters to read into tonight's record. And Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we do have somebody on the phone.
Let me try to get her before we start that. Can I mute unless you're actually speaking? We're getting some feedback from different people. Please mute your mic and, thank you.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Hello, are you on the phone? Hello, are you on the phone? Welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like the phone, the call-in is unresponsive at this time. So I will continue to, we'll monitor that and leave the phone lines open and we'll go back to them after I read some, some letters. The first letter that I have to read is from Sarah Demone and-
Commissioner Morgan, is there someone speaking right now? Because I can't hear anything.
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like there's a, a call on the line, but they are not responsive to me asking them for their, their comment. So we'll, uh, we'll just leave it open and I'll read these letters and then we'll go back to that-
Thank you.
-phone line. Mr. Chief Executive, the first communication is from Sarah Demone. A note from Sarah Demone, "The following letter has been drafted and approved by the individuals listed on the letter. It is not written solely by me but rather by input from these numerous individuals. I am merely the vehicle in which the letter is arriving to each of you."
I'll hang up on them, okay.
"Chief Executive Palmer and the Council of Commissioners of Butte Silver Bow. Back in the fall of two thousand and nineteen, there were a few homes for sale on twelve hundred block of Platinum Street, which an older established part of town with well-maintained residential homes that are fifty to a hundred years old, mixed with newly built homes. We are a friendly neighborhood with neighbors waving at one another, visiting on the streets, smiling at the kids and they ride their bikes and play games. We watch out for each other and celebrate good news and come together during tough times. One of our neighbors, whose house was for sale, had come up or come upon tough times. She lost her husband several years, or several years, and put her home, her home up for sale. Many neighbors checked in on her periodically and kept the rest updated as well as were concerned for her health and safety. We were joyful with her when she told us that she thought, she thought her house sold. A few days later, as she was crying, she told me, or she told us she made a horrible mistake. You see, following her acceptance of the offer, she learned the home she loved was going to be purchased by a nonprofit business to be used as a drug and alcohol recovery home for eight unrelated men in various stages of recovery and from various rehabilitation centers. The residents could include individuals who admitted themselves required to live in a recovery home via court order, pre-release residents on probation, inmates released from prison into private life, and many others. This is not compliant with the zoning code of this neighborhood. R1 is intended primarily for the use and protection of the one family residences. During a neighborhood meeting with seventy-plus neighbors, she apologized. She explained that she had not been told anything about the potential buyer until she accepted the offer and only then was told she was pressed and questioned who it was. She explained she tried to get out of the sale, but she was told she would be sued and would lose. She was scared, she was embarrassed that this happened. She apologized again and cried. It was the beginning of the process to have the ordinance changed so no other neighborhood in the Butte Silver Bow would be blindsided by having a business group home moving in next door without any kind of prior knowledge. It was known that the business group homes, such as the recovery house, can negatively change the dynamic, safety, and makeup of the neighborhood. Individuals from the neighborhood immediately contacted the planning department regarding the current zoning of the area. They were told the sale was a done deal and there was nothing else that could do, that they could do about it. We researched the ordinance, sought legal advice, and met with our commissioner Eric Mankins, who listened to his constituents and put forth a proposal to change the zoning ordinance. Through this process, this is what we, this is what we learned. If, if you're on the meeting, can you please mute your mic? Okay. Um, the first one, Montana Code Annotated, two thousand and nineteen, is titled seventy-six, Land Resources and Use, Chapter Two, Planning and Zoning. They highlighted seventy-six dash two dash four one two, Relationship of Foster Homes, Kinship Foster Homes, Youth Shelter Care Facilities, Youth Group Homes, Community Residential Facilities, and Daycare Home Zoning. Number four, this section may not be construed to prohibit a city or county from requiring conditional use permit in order to maintain a home pursuant to the provisions of subsection one. The home is, for the provisions of subsection one, if the home is licensed by the state or by the Public Health and Human Services, a city or county may not require a conditional use permit in order to maintain a daycare home registered by the Department of Public Health and Human Services. Section four, clearly states communities are allowed to require a conditional use permit to group homes of eight or less. Since a conditional use permit is allowed to be required by a city-county as written in the above state statute, it is not discriminatory. Our Montana legislative contingency would never allow discrimination in the state law. Current Montana communities with a requirement of conditional use permit are sometimes called a special use permit for group homes of eight or less are but limited to the following: Shelby, Belgrade, Livingston, Bozeman, Kalispell. Number two, Montana Code Annotated, two thousand and nineteen, Constitution of the State of Montana, Article Two, Declarations of Rights, Part Two, Declaration of Rights, Right to Know. Section nine, Right to Know, no person shall be deprived of the right to examine documents or to observe the deliberations of all public bodies or agencies of the state governments and its subdivision except in cases in which the demand for individual privacy clearly exceeds the merits of public policy. Constitution of the State of Montana protects privacy and confidentiality. Number three goes to Butte Silver Bow, Montana Municipal Code of Codification of the General Ordinances of the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, Title Two, Administration and Personnel, Chapter two point oh two, Code of Ethics, two point oh, two point oh six oh, Open Meetings. A, all meetings of local agencies or organizations or agencies supported in whole or in part of the public funds or expending public funds must be open to the public and must have an agenda. All meetings of associations that are composed of local agencies and that regulate the rights, duties, or privileges of any individual must be open to the public and must be held in places that are accessible to the public as required by the American Disabilities Act. C, provided however, the presiding officer of any meeting may close the meeting during the time the discussion relates to a matter of individual privacy and then if and only if the presiding officer determines that the demands of the individual privacy clearly exceed the merits of public disclosure. The right of individual privacy may be waived by the additional and whom the discussion pertains to. In that event, the meeting must be open. Butte Silver Bow's municipal code is mirroring the Montana Constitution regarding the public's right to know regarding privacy. Therefore, foster care families' privacy is protected and their information should not be disclosed to the public. When the city is discussing implementation of the change to the ordinance, this ought to be included. What does the change to the ordinance of Butte Silver Bow accomplish? As noted in the above Montana Code Annotated, two thousand and nineteen, this change will permit transparency through a conditional use permit when a commercial business group home, community residential home desires to move into any residential zone neighborhood in Butte Silver Bow. Transparency will help negate rumors, ill will, and worries about the change to the neighborhood. A conditional use permit is the best way to allow public to voice opinions in formal capacity. It encourages discussions leading to critical thinking and lends itself to solutions or compromises can be made and agreed upon by all parties. We would like to be clear that we support all types of community residential homes and group homes. We support making sure the areas where they will reside are both appropriate and safe for both the group home and the people in the neighborhoods. The only way to ensure peace of mind in all residential neighborhoods is with a conditional use permit. We support changing the ordinance to include a provision for conditional use permit to be required for community residential homes. Thank you for your time and attention, signed by the following hundred and four APR residents: Sarah Demone, Paul Blumenthal, Andrew Demone, John Burke, Mary Kay Burke, Miriam Haley, Jocelyn Dodge, Lisa Howell, Noah Thatcher, Ross Richardson, Josh Sterns, Kayla Sterns, Paula McGarvey, Deb Penner, Jean Rossen, Tricia Southergill, Glenn Southergill, James Downey, Mary Colleen Hackett, Christie Gentry, Mike Boston, Avis Boston, Richard Rosa, Julie Rosa, Wayne Harper, Colleen Harper, Tony Harp, Harper, Lisa Sessions, Mark Stauffer, Mary Berg, Mark Berg, Hal Hubber, Julie Hubber, Tara Timm, Miranda Armstrong, Brian Grinnells, Lynn Grinnells, Ben DeWort, Katie DeWort, John Grinnells, Dorinda Grinnells, Kim Duddy, Jim Duddy, Reggie Daly, Donna Lowny, Cindy West, Roy West, Vicki Bergman, Andy Bergman, Nancy Fritz, Deborah Lynn Hall, Jason Character, Joanna M. Lowny, Barbara Gregovich, Margaret K. Lowny, Danielle G. Kelly, Renelle Richardson, Cody Hockaday, Karen Wesson, Paula Merrick, Mark Merrick, Luke Anderson, Tasha Antonoli, Buddy Pressler, Donna Pressler, Doug McHugh, Kaylee Bergman, Marion Taylor, Cecilia Helming, Gary Helming, First Presbyterian Church, Peggy Dean, Reagan Dean, Helen Patterson, Mike Patterson, Corinne Hash, Gary Wright, Carol Wright, Missy Okrich, Jeanette Miller, Russ Robertson, Mark Sterns, Sue Sterns, Anthony Gerenick, Trevor Bristol, Francis Bristol, Ryan Reardon, Bert Abbott, Maureen Abbott, Donna Gullis, and Mary E. Barbachano. That is that communication and Sarah Demone submitted that one. We do have somebody on the line, so we will go to that one right now. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sean Wisner, thirty-two oh one Harrison Avenue.
Welcome, Sean. Please state your comment.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm calling in, I'm a co-founder of the Butte Spirit Center. I'm here today to give comment largely because I feel some personal responsibility for setting this zoning ordinance in motion. And I'm concerned about the negative impact it could have on foster families and group homes for people with mental illness, disabilities, or substance use disorders. I think I understand the arguments for the ordinance and I do recognize that a lot of good people have supported it. I do believe however, after having worked on this recovery home project for almost two years, that it would, that it will be ineffective at its intended purposes and harmful to not-for-profit organizations and foster families trying to help vulnerable populations in our community. One of the main problems with the ordinance is that it only applies to state-licensed recovery homes as well as foster homes and group homes for people with disabilities or mental illness. There's been a lot of talk about halfway houses, but the vast majority of such homes are unlicensed and would be unaffected by the ordinance. There is not currently, nor has there been in recent history, a state-licensed recovery home in view. Ours will be the first in recent history and likely to be the only one for the foreseeable future. State-licensed homes have stringent and expensive staffing requirements that make them very difficult to support financially. Most are subsidized by larger parent organizations. Ours has been supported by the generous donations of over eighty people, eighty donors, and four Montana-based foundations. While I've not found official statistics, based on our research, I believe there are likely ten or more unlicensed halfway houses or sober living homes in the state for every licensed one. I recognize this ordinance started after our proposed location at twelve fifty West Platinum. In that case, we acknowledged that we were not proactive enough in reaching out to the neighbors, but we never made any effort to conceal our plans from anyone. And we had planned to talk to the neighbors well before we opened, which was still six months away at least from when we pulled out of the contract. We pulled out of the contract voluntarily within days of hearing concerns from the neighbors. We have moved on to another location and we went door-to-door for a block and a half handing out brochures and telling the neighbors what our plans were. The reception has been much better and several neighbors have gone out of their way to welcome us and a couple have already done volunteer work helping to fix it up. We have a team of volunteers working hard to beautify the house inside and out to make an environment people can be proud of and a positive contribution to the neighborhood. We are serious about being good neighbors and plan to volunteer with snow removal, lawn care, and paint jobs in the neighborhood. I believe we learned a lot from the situation and are moving forward in a positive direction with support from so many members of the community, which to me has been truly inspiring. I just hate to think that we did collateral damage to foster families and other nonprofits in the process. Thank you for taking this comment.
Thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Thanks for, thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Sarah Demone, twelve seventeen, West Platinum.
Hello, Sarah, welcome. Please state your comment.
Thank you very much. Chief Executive Palmer, Council of Commissioners, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today regarding the change to the zoning ordinance to require community residential homes obtain a conditional use permit when wishing to locate in a residential zoned area. I facilitated the group of the letter that you just listened to. Hold on. Sorry, I had to turn my little speaker off. Anyway, I've been facilitating this group since we learned of the Spirit House planning to move into a home on West Platinum Street in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. We've learned many things through this process. One, and most importantly, is that our commissioner Eric Mankins has been listening, researching, speaking, and representing his constituents and many other constituents of other districts as they have joined us. I have been asked by numerous people to publicly thank Commissioner Mankins for listening to us and learning with us. So thank you, Commissioner Mankins. I've also been asked to correct information that has been said throughout this process that is currently is incorrect. First, it's been said we're using this as a weapon to scare the community residential home and we're using it as a veil for discriminating against groups and groups of people. This is not true. It is disturbing to all one hundred and four individuals who signed this letter. At no point has there been any discriminatory words said or implied and at no point have we ever thought our public comment would be described as a weapon. In today's world where racism and discrimination is strong and prevalent, comments such as this is crossing the line, especially to the individuals who believe strongly in protecting the rights of all people. Within Montana Code Annotated, two thousand and nineteen, Section twenty-six, two dash four, one, two, Relationship of Foster Home Kinship Homes, Youth Shelter Care Facilities, Group Home, Community Residential Facilities, and Daycare Homes to Zoning, Item four, this section may not be construed to prohibit a city or county from requiring a conditional use permit in order to maintain a home pursuant to the provisions of subsection one if the home is licensed by the Department of Public Health and Human Services. We are requesting the zoning ordinance of Butte Silver Bow require a conditional use permit as allowed in section of state statute seventy-six, two dash four one two. If you believe there's discrimination, then it's on the part of the state of Montana. For me, I do not believe the state of Montana would have any kind of discriminatory law. Secondly, to believe that foster families would lose their confidentiality and privacy by having to obtain a conditional use permit is incorrect. In both the Constitution of the State of Montana and in Butte Silver Bow's municipal code, privacy is protected. In Montana's Constitution, Article Two, Section Three, Declaration of Rights, the right to know clearly states, no person shall be deprived of the right to examine documents or to observe the deliberations of all public bodies or agencies of state government and its subdivision except in cases where the demand of individual privacy clearly exceeds the merits of public disclosure. Butte Silver Bow's municipal code mirrors the state constitution by stating the presiding officer of any meeting may close the meeting during the time the discussion relates to a matter of individual privacy and then if and only if the presiding officer determines the demand of individual privacy exceeds the merits of public disclosure. Foster families' privacy is protected by both Montana's constitution and Butte Silver Bow. When deciding how to implement the code change, I do have complete faith that the planning department and our county attorney's office will ensure the privacy of foster families is protected. Third, as we have said all along, we're asking for transparency. It has been said we don't need to know what's happening in our neighborhood. When a business chooses to move into a residential zone neighborhood that is out of scope of what the zoning rules are for the neighborhood, we do have the right to know. The state of Montana in statute seven-six, two dash four one two clearly states we have the right to request a conditional use permit. We do have the right to know. This is the transparency we are requesting. We are requesting Butte Silver Bow to follow Montana Code Annotated, two nineteen, Section seventy-six, two dash four one two, pass the change to the zoning ordinance to require a conditional use permit. I thank each and every one of you.
Thanks, Sarah, for the comments. Mr. Chief Executive, it doesn't look like there's anybody on the line right now, so I'll continue reading. Uh, the next one is from Margie Sekum, Chief Executive Officer of Action Inc. Dear Chief Executive Palmer, Chairman Morgan, and members of the commission, as the Chief Executive Officer of Action Inc., a community action agency dedicated to developing pathways out of poverty and advocating for disadvantaged citizens, I would like to encourage you to consider turning down a proposal that would require zoning permits for group homes. consider turning down a proposal that would require zoning permits for group homes. Please do not stop reading. A vote on this issue is not just about the government process, but about human rights dictating to people with disadvantages, whether they're related to health, mental health, race, gender, identity, economic status, or any other condition we view as setting us apart from one another. Where they can live is not who we are in Butte. It is not who we are as a nation. A vote for this flies in the face of the National Constitution and would be an act of discrimination. This issue matters on a, on an ethical level. Our team at Action, Inc., and many other organizations spend our days working to build coalitions that together can improve conditions for all people. When we are, when we work together and we support each other, we are better people, and we have better outcomes. When we divide, we cannot be effective. Please do not take this decisive act. Our coun, our country is already so divided, let's not contribute to that and be that community that embraces work, that heals individuals and communities. I say this as a professional and as a citizen of the neighborhood in which a proposed project began this discourse. I thank you for your service and hope you will vote against the proposed ordinance. The next one is from Miriam Haley. Butte has beautiful neighborhoods. The residents of each neighborhood have the right to know what is coming into their neighborhoods. I urge the council to listen to your neighbors and to pass the conditional use permitting process. And that one, sincerely, Miriam Haley. The next one is, um, R. Edward Banderob, twenty-six oh one Grand Avenue. Um, yes, I understand it cannot be denied, but the residents of the neighborhood have the right to know what is coming into their neighborhood, even if it cannot be denied. And the state of Montana law does not provide for the residents to be advised. As for the, for protecting the foster homes, that can be resolved with simple amendment to the local special use permit request. When a commercial organization, for-profit or nonprofit, that provides goods and services for pay, wants to establish an operation in a residential zone, even when the state of Montana law stipulates that the commercial enterprise shall not be treated as a business for zoning purposes, the residents of the neighborhood in which said enterprise wants to establish itself have the right to know what is being located in their neighborhood. Foster care has shown just cause why they should be exempted from any such local special use permit requirement. There is a very great difference between foster homes, where a foster parent is on duty twenty-four-seven, and the proposed group homes that hire a nine-to-five manager. That again was from R. Edward Banderob. We do have another call on the phone, so I'll go to that one.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Demetrius Fassis, five-two-one North Excelsior.
Hello, Demetrius, please state your comment.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm speaking with regard to the proposed zone change application number one-eighty regarding licensed community residential facilities. As a co-founder of the Butte Spirit Center with familiarity of the Department of Public Health and Human Services licensing requirements, I want to first address the current requirements for licensing a group home. Um, as the current zone change proposal as proposed will only affect licensed homes. Uh, in order for a community residential facility to legally open, they must obtain a license through the Department of Public Health and Human Services. It is during this process where the fitness of the home for its proposed purpose is assessed in person by a qualified third party. If the home is deemed unsuitable or the structure, the policies and procedures for the community residential facility don't meet the statutory requirements, the license will not be granted, and the home will not meet the current zoning law. I want to assure you that the licensing requirements and inspections that are already required of community residential facilities thoroughly vet the applicant group homes for their suitability. It's my understanding that an ordinance like this can be passed, but no licensed group home applicant can be denied a permit. This presents an undue burden for both licensed community residential facilities, including foster homes, and for the zoning board of adjustments, who must see to processing each and every conditional use permit. Given the safety requirements, sanitation requirements, supervision requirements, home specifications, and other licensing hurdles currently in place for community residential facilities to open, it's my belief that the addition of, of conditional use permit criteria is superfluous and costly, and may dissuade potential well-intentioned community residential facilities from opening while posing no threat or restriction against group homes that don't seek formal licensure. I ask that you trust the formal process of the BPHHS licensing requirements and that you oppose Zone Change one-eighty. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your commitment to serve our community.
Thank you for the comment.
Mr. Chief Executive, I will continue reading. The next letter is from Matt DeLong, um, real estate sales agent at Homestead Real Estate. Um, dear Commissioners, I am in support of Commissioner Mankin's proposal for group homes to obtain a conditional use permit for operating in Butte, Montana. I believe that as a community, we have the right to know where these homes are wanting to operate, and we deserve an opportunity to voice our opinion. Think about the negative consequences of a sober, a sober living home, um, opening next door to a school or a daycare. We are talking about the safety of our children. Again, that was Matt DeLong. Uh, the next one is from Ross Richardson. Um, I'm writing in support of Commissioner Mankin's proposal for group homes to have a CUP to operate in a residential area. I was recently discussing this topic with an individual who asked why I cared so much. He stated he would rather not know if someone next door to him was using and smoking meth. I have three young children, ages five, three, and one, and I like to know what is going on in and around my neighborhood for the safety and protection of my family. I share this concern with many families in my neighborhood, the safety of our young kids. I am asking for some type of transparency to keep me informed as to what is going on in my neighborhood. I completely understand the CUP cannot keep them from locating in my neighborhood, but at least I have the opportunity for my questions, concerns, concerns to be addressed. A prime example of the transparency needed was the group home, um, going in on Platinum last fall. I believe the Spirit Group would be the first to say they were not ready, prepared to operate a home in a residential area. Many questions and concerns could simply not be addressed. I also do not see how a legitimate organization would oppose applying for a CUP. Concerns could be addressed. It could distinguish them from those looking to make a profit. I am a hundred percent in support of the treatment facilities, group homes, and understand the need. However, the issue here is to be sure that a treatment center in residential neighborhood can properly support each other. So, I ask this question. If these homes are allowed in neighborhoods, who will be responsible if something should happen to a child or any individual for that matter? In my opinion, it all starts with the vote on this proposal. Thanks, Ross Richardson. The next one is from Deb Penner. Please accept these comments in regards to the decisions slated to be made at this evening's meeting regarding the implementation of a conditional use permit process in our county. I am in vigorous support of the institution of a requirement for special use permits to group homes moving into residential neighborhoods in Butte Silver Bow. My reasons are as follows. A group home, whether for-profit or nonprofit, is a business with all the attributes of a business, multiple staff, parking for staff cars, parking for residents of home, transportation vans, deliveries, potential for an increase of law enforcement to frequent the group home, which increases concerns for the neighborhood's safety. Dynamics of the residential neighborhood will change due to, due to the above-mentioned business environment. Zoning codes of Butte Silver Bow read that businesses are not permitted in the residential zone areas. In order to create a lawful route to ensure transparency between businesses and residents in Butte Silver Bow, a conditional use permit process is appropriate. This process is neither novel nor discriminatory. It is commonly used in communities throughout our state with success. It is unquestionably legal per our state statutes and is an incorrect decision for our community. The appropriate legal action is to institute a requirement that community residential homes obtain a conditional use permit. This provides much-needed transparency on the part of the group home businesses moving into the residential area that is not zoned for business. It allows for public comment, which is vital to a thriving community, and allows open discussion between owners, managers of group homes, and community members before a home is instituted in a residential area. This is allowed and stated in the state statute as such. The institution of a conditional use permitting process is not discriminatory to group homes. I agree that there is a growing need for community residential homes in all communities throughout Montana. These businesses are a necess, necessary part of the culture we are living today. A federal and state budgeting for human services decreases the state, for the federal state-funded facilities are or have already closed, thus smaller community residential homes are increasing in the communities. Here in Butte Silver Bow, we already have successful facilities, including Aware and BSW. These facilities are needed and are welcome in addition to the Butte Silver Bow community. My support for this measure is not to deter the creation of community residential homes in our community, but to ensure transparency and successful integration of these facilities. I understand that some community members and council representatives have expressed concerns regarding families providing foster care and how this permitting process might, um, affect them and their privacy. I offer these points. As proposed, a permitting process would, would apply only to homes with eight or more residents. This automatically negates the vast majority of this argument, and most foster families will not be housing such a large fam, or large number of, of children. As far, as far as the concerns for the privacy, the Montana Constitution has already addressed this issue. Foster's families' private information, including their name and address, can legally be kept confidential from the public according to the Montana Code Annotated two thousand nineteen, Article Two, Part Two, Declarations of Rights of Montana State Constitution states, in Section Nine, right to know that no person shall be deprived of the right to examine documents or observe the deliberations of all public bodies or agencies of the state and its subdivisions, except in cases in which the demand of individual, individual privacy clearly exceeds the merits of public disclosure. I urge the council to pass this initiative, which is fully legal and is appropriate steps towards a beautiful home for all residents. Sincerely, Deb Penner. Mr. Chief Executive, we're going back to the phone lines.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, this is Larry Smith, twenty-seven North Excelsior in Butte.
Welcome, Larry.
I am calling in support of commi, of, uh, message, communication number eleven. I'm seeing it as number eleven on the, uh, on your list. I am the president of Butte CPR, Citizens for Preservation Revitalization, and we are committed to, uh, contributing ten thousand dollars towards the improvement of the, um, I'm just, uh, the Basin Creek Caretaker's Home, and we have raised this money through small contributions and hard work of fundraising, and it's a significant amount of money for our small organization, and we urge the council to pass that communication, um, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry, for your comments.
Chairman Morgan?
Mr. Chief Executive?
Before you go on, I would like to remind the people out there listening that the correct call-in number is four-nine-seven-five-zero-zero-nine. If they called the regular switchboard, they will not get through at this time of the evening, so they have to call four-nine-seven-five-zero-zero-nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The met, next letter that I have is from Matt DeLong. Uh, dear Commissioners, I am in support of Commissioner Mankin's proposal for group homes to first obtain a conditional use permit for operating in Butte. I believe that this, that as a community, we have the right to know where the, these homes are wanting to operate, and we deserve an opportunity to voice our opinion. Think about the negative consequences of a sober living group home opening up next to a school or a daycare. We're talking about the safety of our children. Thanks, Matt DeLong. Mr. Chief Executive, the next one is, uh, Vicky B. Bergman, uh, Senior Sales Executive. Has a Texas address, but I think they live here too. Dear Mr. Mankins, I am writing you regarding the importance of changing the ordinance so community residential homes will be required to apply for and receive a special use permit in order to, uh, move into any residential neighborhood in Butte. In order for you to understand why this is so important, I need to give you a little background. My husband and I live in Houston, Texas. Two of our children, Brent and Kaylee, attend Montana State University. When our son was a freshman in MSU, we purchased a second home in Ennis. We love it out there, and, but my husband travels for work. So, when we are in Montana, which is about every other month, I am alone out there and a lot during the week, which I'm not comfortable with. When we talked about actually retiring to Montana and being there full-time, I told my husband I wanted a home in a city where I could make friends, get my hair cut, and join a church, so we started looking. After going and exploring all the larger cities, we realized Butte was where we wanted to be, and we started looking over a year ago at homes there. We loved downtown, but realized we could never navigate the hills in the winter after our car slid down the hill while we were trying to get to a home for sale to see. We looked into flats, but wanted to be away from the shops and restaurants, so we finally found a beautiful home at twelve forty West Platinum and purchased it last December. Right after we closed, I was there decorating and meeting my neighbors. Imagine my surprise and horror when my next-door neighbor told me that she had been duped into almost selling her home to a halfway house. The whole reason we purchased in Butte was so that I could feel safe. When my husband was out of town during the week, and we almost bought a house next door to a place where people who had gotten out of jail or rehab would be living, and most wouldn't have cars, so they wouldn't, they would be walking back and forth in front of my house every day. I am all forgiving people's second chances, but we moved to Butte so that we could live in a safe neighborhood, and that would have undergone everything so, we had worked so hard for. Zoning is important in the city, and we understand that, but with all, all we are asking for is a multi-person housing, to be in a commercial part of the city, not a neighborhood, with single-family homes. I realize the issue about foster homes having to get this same special permit muddies the waters, and I don't believe they should even fall under the same restrictions. I would love to have a foster family living next to me, but it is my understanding that they are protected by the right to privacy by the state of Montana, so they're having to get a special permit to operate, wouldn't violate their privacy in any way. They will be able to operate and live in our, our same neighborhoods as they should. This is only an issue about commercial ventures, not foster families, and you should vote as such. Anyone bringing up anything else right to privacy, discrimination, is just trying to confuse things to get you to vote against the bill for their personal gain. Please vote to uphold the values of their beautiful town and keep it safe. We are counting on you to help and protect us. Please, uh, feel free to reach out if you'd like to discuss anything in more detail. And again, Vicky B. Bergman. Uh, the next one is from Josh Sterns. Um, dear Commissioners, I a hundred percent support Commissioner Mankin's proposal for group homes to have a CUP to operate in a residential area. I believe it is possible to make this happen without affecting the foster homes or Aware type houses. Do I believe this is going to protect every kid from being victimized? No, I do not. But I do see this as an, as eliminating the opportunity. One of the best ways to prevent suicide is to lock up your guns. One of the best ways to stop a sex offender that prey on kids is to eliminate the opportunity of being around kids unchecked, hence one of the reasons there is a national sex offender registry. Do you really think it is a bright idea to have a sober living next to a school zone? I sure as hell don't, and I don't think I need to go into why. The city of Butte doesn't need to be reminded about DUI deaths involving s, kids. In closing, integrity goes a long way. Integrity is following your moral and ethical convictions and doing the right thing in all circumstances, even if no one is watching you. Having integrity means you are true to yourself and would do anything that demeans or dishonors yourself. Thanks, Josh Sterns. Mr. Chief Executive, that concludes all the written correspondence that I have to read tonight. Um, we do have more calls, though.
Thank you. There are no more calls?
There was one, Mr. Chief Executive, but they, they literally just hung up. So, if they want to call back, we can give them a few.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Mr. Chief Executive, they, they never. Hold on, we just got one.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening. My name is John Burke. I, uh, live at twelve-twenty-two West I live at 1222 West Platinum, Butte, Montana. And my comment is, as a longstanding resident and taxpayer from Butte Silver Bowe, I strongly support what was originally Resolution 466, and then I think it was Communication 202006, originally proposed by Commissioner Mannken's several months ago. This obviously provides for the incorporation of a conditional use permit that would be placed with the current zoning regulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for calling Butte Silver Bowe Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Karine Hash, 2822 Harvard Avenue, Butte, Montana.
Welcome. Please state your comment.
So I was just calling in regards to the conditional use permit, and I wanted to say that I fully would like to see this rule changed within Butte Silver Bowe. Currently, there is a sober living facility on Texas Avenue. And before that went in, the owner of that home had actually gone through the neighborhood and told the neighborhood residents that he was going to use the home to rent to college students. So it wasn't until almost eight months later that there was problems in the neighborhood that we had actually called up to the Silver Bowe Police Department and found out that it is actually a sober living facility. Currently, right now, there is five violent offenders living there. All of them have multiple fractions, anywhere from burglary, robbery, all the way up to federal homicide. I am asking for this change for the transparency for the residential neighborhood. Most families in this community work very, very hard for the money and to earn to purchase a home, and the last thing that most of the residents in the community want is for a sober living facility to move into their neighborhood. I am all for second chances. It's not like you have one individual moving into a home, coming out of jail or prison and trying to better their life and make themselves a prospective person in society. This is a revolving door for this homeowner, where there's multiple clients coming in and out. There's no transparency over there whatsoever. We have since, two of the neighborhood residents have had to install cameras due to the vandalism on their homes. We have actually seen residents out in the backyard beating each other with baseball bats. There is, it's supposed to be a sober living facility. There's people coming all hours of the night, coming through the alley. They bring in alcohol and whatever else. I think that if this question was opposed to anybody on the commission, wonder if this sober living facility was next door to you. Wonder if it was next door to your grandchildren. Wonder if it was next door to your own children or your elderly parents. Most residents work very, very hard to buy a home in a residential community. I have worked with individuals my entire life, people that have disabilities, that are veterans. There is all kinds of laws out there to protect those people. I believe that foster homes should be exempt from this. I'm just posing this question that think about if this sober living facility was next to you, next door to you, and in your neighborhood. Please, please look at this and vote for the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bowe Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Demetrius Fassis, 521 North Excelsior.
Hello, again, Demetrius. Please state your name.
Mr. Chair, apologies for a second address, but I would like to address the comments that were made just previous in case there's any misunderstanding. The home on Texas Street is operating as an unlicensed home, and the current ordinance as proposed would have no effect on homes like that operating. The ordinance as it's proposed will only inhibit licensed homes, which have a very thorough system of vetting and policies and procedures in place to ensure that the homes are managed appropriately and that there are adequate protections for the neighbors and the neighborhood as well as for the individuals living in the home. And I think that this is one of the key points to understand is that there is a need that should be addressed here, but this ordinance does not address it. And some of our efforts as the Butte Spirit Center are to develop programs that can work with men that are in unlicensed homes, but our operation is going to be strictly a licensed home. And hopefully, we can have some kind of impact on the homes that are unlicensed in being able to provide oversight and structure and build a package for the landlords that are renting to people in early recovery or coming out of the pre-release that can help provide some structure and stability in there. But as far as the zone change as it's proposed, it won't have any effect on those homes. And I'm afraid that it doesn't actually address the problem that people are afraid of. And we've tried from day one to kind of distance ourselves from the homes that are operating unlicensed in our community. And we are building a different system, and hopefully, it's a system that will have a beneficial effect on people recovering from substance use disorder in our community. And it can continue to grow, and we can really be of benefit. Thanks again for your time, and I really appreciate the conversation here.
Thank you for the comment. Mr. Chief Executive, that looks like it concludes all of the phone calls and written messages that I have. At the Command Center.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to, what I'm going to do is rearrange the agenda a little bit and move the communication to be read and acted upon, which is 2020-334 from George Schoolicich, Under Sheriff Pete Silver Bowe, requesting council commissioners and the chief executive to approve probationary officer Shawn Brown to position of confirmed officer within the Butte Silver Bowe Department. Don't know if Under Sheriff Schoolicich or Sheriff Lester are on the line. Didn't see any of their names on there. So not seeing that they're on here tonight. I'll read the communication from George Schoolicich, and it's, Dear council members and chief executive Palmer, as of August 12, 2020, probationary officer Shawn Brown has successfully completed his one-year probationary period in the Montana Law Enforcement Academy in his field training officer program. And I am requesting your approval to move him to the position of a confirmed officer within our department on August 19, 2020. Sincerely, George Schoolicich, Under Sheriff. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. With great pleasure, I'll make a motion that we approve Shawn Brown as a confirmed officer within the Butte Silver Bowe Police Department.
Second, we have a motion made, seconded, to concur in a request in Communication 2020-334 to confirm Officer Shawn Brown as a regular officer, confirmed officer within the police department. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have 12 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. I'd like to congratulate Shawn Brown as a newly confirmed officer. Thank you. Next, we'll move into the consent agenda, A 1 through 4, PE Communications 1 through 17. Do we have any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chief Executive, I'd like to segregate number, out of the B Communications, to Communication Number 2020-332.
Are there any others? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I would like to segregate Communication Number 9, 2020-340.
Okay. Any others? Commissioner Mannkenz?
I would like to segregate Number 4, Communication Number 2020-258.
Out of the Committee of the Whole.
Out of the Committee of the Whole Report?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so that's out of the, Number 4, out of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Report. Are there any others? Not seeing any other hands going up or hearing anything, so Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'll make a motion that we approve Section 1, the Consent Agenda, A 1 through, A, the Committee Reports 1 through 4, with the exclusion of Number 4 in the Committee of the Whole Report, 2020-258. B, Communications 1 through 17, with the exclusion of Number 2, 2020-332, and Number 9, Commissioner Fisher, please check me, 2020-340.
Second, we have a motion made, seconded, to confirm the consent agenda, A 1 through 4, exclusive of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Report, Number 4, and PE Communications 1 through 17, exclusive of Number 2 and Number 9. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like there's 12 yea and 0 nay.
Motion carries. We'll go to the segregated items, Committee of the Whole Meeting Report, Number 4. This was Communication 2020-258, Lori Casey, Planning Director, requesting council commissioners to be advised that the Butte Silver Bowe Planning Board, who serves as the zoning commission, has rendered a recommendation regarding zone change application, Number 180, regarding licensed community residential facilities. Commissioner Mannkenz?
You know, at this time, before I make, Chief Executive Palmer, before I make a motion, I would just want to open it up to anybody on the council that would like to speak before I do make my motion. I'd rather not delay anything more if someone else would like to speak up at this time.
Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. As we all know, I'm fully in support of a conditional use permit. You know, we've heard for 11 months, back and forth, about both sides of the issue, and I think everybody, the dialogue's been very progressive from both sides so that we can hear everyone's concerns in the public. You know, it's almost considered that, you know, by some, that those of us that are in support of it are looking to do harm to youth in our community, or, you know, make it harder for foster homes. And I don't think that's our intent at all, at all. It's just that, you know, it's our first step as this board, the city council, to get the ball.
Commissioner McDonough, I believe we lost you. And then hopefully, we'll hear our. You were breaking up, and we lost the last about minute of your, maybe not that long.
Okay, so just to back up then, you know, it's, those of us that are in support of the conditional use permit are not looking to make it harder on youth in our community or to make it more difficult for foster homes. Our concern is that there should be public disclosure. And of course, we all know that the halfway transitional sober living facility did get the ball rolling with this discussion. You know, if you look at the public testimony tonight, we have four, or three, there were three police officers that signed the letter in support of passing a conditional use permit. Those gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen. Brendan, you have lost your, in prison. Sorry, I can't. I'm going to clock out and sit in Commissioner Dahlheim's chair for my defense acceptable. It is. All right. Sorry about the delay in the buffer. Okay, so as everyone knows, I've been in full support of.
Brendan, can you mute your, oh, thank you.
I've been in full support of the communication to have a conditional use permit move forward. You know, we've heard discussion from many parties in our community, and I feel that the dialogue's been very progressive. You know, those of us that are in support of it or not, against youth or making anything harder for foster homes or youth in our community. If you look at the sponsor of the bill, Commissioner Mannkenz, he's an educator and a coach in our community. He spends every day of his career working with the youth in our community. Many of us that are in support of it spend thousands of hours annually volunteering for organizations to provide youth activities in our community. You know, if you look at the public testimony tonight, we have three police officers sign on in support of the communication. You know, they deal with this every day. That's their profession. And they see the challenges of these homes that are not licensed or the challenges that come up in neighborhoods. And I believe that if three of them are willing to sign on the dotted line with their name, you know, that their credibility should be taken at face value. I have lots of questions, and I'll probably go a lot longer tonight than I normally would, but, you know, there was a news story earlier this evening talking about this communication, and Mr. Cannon was on, sharing his concerns with the community and his concerns about foster homes, and also discussed possible litigation, which, of course, I would never want to see Butte Silver Bowe entering the litigation, but, you know, I have a tough time with some of the logic sometimes. You know, we've had foster homes, or foster parents identify themselves publicly that they're foster parents, and they do a very admirable job. I have no qualms about being foster parent. It's a role that's very tough to take on. They should be commended. They're exceptional people. They do extraordinary work with these kids. So I'm not saying anything derogatory in that light. However, the state of Montana makes a public record of where everyone lives. If I got on Montana Cadastral on my computer right now or my phone, I could see where all of you live. I could find out who lives next to me. I could find out anybody in Butte if I look up. in Butte if I look up their name, whether it's Beaver in the state of Montana, where they live, the state of Montana makes a public record. We also heard about the violent offender registry list, you know, I don't think it's discriminatory that the state of Montana lets people know where people live, and I don't believe that it's discriminatory to let people know that there's violent, uh, or sexual offenders living on the same block or within, uh, the same area of town as people. If it's discriminatory, I don't think that the state of Montana would do it, but they do it. It's, it's very clear that if you look up where I live on Montana Cadastro, you'll find it. We also heard testimony, uh, tonight from the halfway house on Texas Avenue, and that's, uh, you know, in my general neighborhood, it's not in my district, but it's close to where I live, uh, and I think that the home has some issues. You know, it's, it's never kept up, i- it never looks clean, uh, community enrichment can probably, um, make a call to it, you know, it's not licensed, it fell in the loophole. I understand that, um, there's a big loophole that was brought, brought up tonight in the two phone calls, uh, by Mr. Demetrius, um, you know, if you have less than eight, you don't have to license with the state, and you can just kind of, to do whatever, but, you know, I don't, I don't think that makes it right, I don't think that housing five or six or even seven people with no supervision and nobody on site to provide services or treatment is correct, I mean, we have plenty of opportunities in Butte to address so- sober living or real counseling, I mean, we have a contract in Butte Silver Bow with CCCS, with Mr. Thatcher, uh, we have the Montana Chemical Dependency Center on Ridgery Street, there's a new rehabilitation center that opened in the, uh, former MEP Center on Art Street, there's a recovery addiction facility that just opened up on Montana Street, uh, there's the SMART program, there's the START program, um, I might have misspoken one of them, it's either SMART or START, but it's addiction recovery, so, so we have plenty of opportunity, you know, I think that this is getting muddied by the fact that it looks like we're trying to single out foster homes, which, which I don't believe. No, I'll leave that at that for a minute.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, uh, the one thing I do want to say on, on this, uh, when this, to make this thing to, to move forward, um, definitely wasn't no intention, it was a, a positive, um, outlook on, you know, the, the safety and change for, for our town and our communities, um, what, wh- one that, the, one thing that was, uh, what, what frustrates me in this whole thing is that the commercial use, um, that, that it's, um, a home that's being purchased, and then, um, the, I just feel like it's more of a commercial use, um, they're not, you know, but, but that's, that's my, one of my biggest concerns in this, um, in the house is right down the street from me, it's got eight people in it, and, um, you know, it's a, well, on that note, it's a, what a great, great investment for the, that, um, and it, but it's just, it's, it's, to me, it seems like a, a commercial use that's in a residential area, that, um, um, just doesn't, um, I just don't, in my opinion, that, that, that's my biggest concern, um, the, the whole thing of who, who lives next door to you, um, I, you know, I, it's not that, uh, the, who, who lives in your neighborhood, we don't want these in our neighborhood, um, um, you know, that, that is a, um, a hard thing, a hard way to, you know, to put it in, in them terms is, you know, the, the one down the street from me, we, you know, you deal with it, it's not a big deal, it, it, life goes on, the cops are there three times a week, and, uh, um, you know, we, you know, we just gotta deal with it, you know, um, nobody wants that, that to happen in their neighborhood, now, that could happen to anybody, but the, the chances of the cops being down there and the chances of, um, um, unsafe things happening in that scenario, um, really makes it higher. Um, again, this is definitely not trying to, um, do any damage to any, um, foster homes or anything, right? Um, definitely still in support of it, one thing I do want to mention, um, you know, when we do, when the public calls in and they say their address, you know, their, their address is of residence, um, don't even know where, what this means, but when Mr. Wisner just called in, his, he stated his address was, what, th- thirty-one twelve Harrison Avenue, which is the old Starbucks building, you know, I just wanted to reference that, you know, with the most of the citizens that do call in would reference their addresses, mine would be twenty-one oh seven Gaylord Josh O'Neill, so I'm not sure, you know, what that means, just wanted to let, let, let that know, it's, obviously, when you're speaking publicly, you reference your, what your address is. Because I don't know, don't know what that, what that means, just wanted to let everybody know that. I guess at, at this time, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Callahan?
You're on mute.
You're on mute, you're.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer, I just wanted to add, you know, the main reason I'm for this is transparency is in the best interest of everybody in our community, um, these homes do a lot of good for people, uh, there's nothing wrong with letting the neighbors know what kind of home you're putting in there, who's responsible for taking care of issues that some of the neighbors have, that's all the neighbors are asking, they're not asking anything other than if they have issues with this home of their neighborhood, who do they go to, to take care of the issues? If the issue's the police department can't address, somebody that runs the home or something needs to be approached, you have to know who they are to be able to take care of them, you know, some of these homes, they rent them out, they don't shovel their snow, they don't take care of their lawns, well, who do the neighbors go to to find out how to get this stuff taken care of, you know, uh, a lot of these homes do the right thing, most of the homes do the right thing, a lot of good people come out of these homes, who do need them, but it doesn't mean every one of them plays by the rules, and that's what we need to do, is put an ordinance in, protect the, protect the citizens of youth, or the homes that don't play by the rules, and that's all we're asking, that's all the, the citizens are asking, that's by two cents, thank you.
Thank you, any other Commissioners, Commissioner Olson?
Uh, thank you, Chief Executive, uh, Palmer, um, I think Dan Callahan said it correctly, is that, uh, you'd like to, uh, keep track of the unlicensed homes that are, uh, basically running under the radar and are, don't have any licensing requirements, and so they can run the home anywhere they want, as stated before tonight, though, that is outside this ordinance, and so, the particular target that we're going after, to bring up the weapon again, I mean, the, the target we're trying to get, get a hold of is the, um, unlicensed homes that, uh, are planning to move into your neighborhood, and at least finding out about the transparency, this ordinance won't do that unless it's over eight and they're licensed, and those people are already licensed and overseen by the state of Montana, so, I, and a- also based on a lot of the information, uh, that we got today, uh, from various legal, uh, recommendations, um, they still recommend that we should not pursue this ordinance then, so that's kind of where I'm, I'm sitting, um, I, I understand people need to know who's moving ne- in next door to them, but if it's an unlicensed facility, it's not going to be covered by this, from what I understand, so, uh, this isn't going to do what a lot of people would like it to do, thank you.
Thank you, any other Commissioners, Commissioner O'Neill, follow up?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, in my follow up on that, I just want to piggyback on, on what, uh, Commissioner Olson's saying, um, true that, that the, the state of Montana does do that on eight and over, or whatever it is, but then that's the frustrating thing is, they go to the state of Montana, purchase a house here, and then it doesn't, we don't even know in our county, so, with the hopes of passing this ordinance, that, that, that we would know, okay, so we would, a- again, the example, the one down the street from me, that, that's not, I, a- as far as my knowledge goes, and if I'm wrong, slap me when you see me, that one is not, it's registered to the state of Montana, that's it, but not in, in Butte Silver Bow County, so, to me, that, that is one thing that protects it, yeah, it's going to go through, but at least we're going to know, um, but, thank you.
Commissioner Sorge, did you have your hand up? You're on mute.
Yeah, all right, you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, pressed the wrong button, uh, say, you know, I understand, people wanting to know what's going on in their neighborhood, and I guess that's, you know, I, uh, it's being vigilant and what's, paying attention to what's going on around you, and that's, and that's a good thing, you know, I think we all need to be doing that, to be paying attention, let's, you know, to try to protect ourselves, protect our properties, protect our neighbors and so on, but, you know, a lot of these, uh, discussions has also been about group homes, you know, these group homes are protected, they're protected by the federal ADA, um, you know, we've heard from our county attorney, we have some information from a city attorney, we had a, information from a, a state attorney, uh, saying that these, these group homes are all protected, as dangerous waters that we're, that we're treading on, yes, you know, we can have some, uh, public hearings, um, you know, the, the people that are bringing this on now, I do believe them, that none of them have any kind of, uh, any kind of ill, ill will towards what's going on, but that's, who's to say that's not going to happen, you know, say, five years from now, you know, they're gonna say, you know, down in my neck of the woods, are these people going to really raise holy hell, or holy heck, and try to get it stopped, you know, without really knowing all the facts, without studying the rules, or without studying, you know, um, I just don't know if this is going to, uh, do more harm than good of what we want it to do, I'm, I'm not sure I'm supporting, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other Commissioners, Commissioner McDonough, follow up?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, um, you know, these, these other group homes that provides other services, the folks that are disabled and, and have mental health issues, uh, they do an excellent job, and the difference between them and a lot of facilities that don't is that they have somebody on site all of the time, and not only that, I mean, they're really eas- easily identifiable, uh, you know, we heard from, uh, Mr. Noonan, who was, uh, representative for our legislative district and is, I believe, the head of aware now, you know, if you drive by an aware home, and you, you know it's an aware home, because it has a sign out front, and has a van out front, it's manicured, and it has people.
We lost you again, Brendan.
We need that to open. So? So some of these group homes, they're easily identifiable, again, and they have staff on site twenty-four seven. You know, people are aware when they're in their neighborhood, uh, you can drive around and see any of these other group home facilities, they're easily identifiable as a, a group home, usually have a transportation van out front, they have a sign, it's manicured and well-kept, it provides actual services, now, again, I understand that there's a huge loophole, we've been talking about it for eleven months, but, I mean, I'm exiting the commission here at the end of the year, but, for those of you that are left, um, wouldn't you want to know if the home's moving into your neighborhood, it's licensed or not, I mean, as Commissioner O'Neill made an excellent point, they can get licensed with the state of Montana and, and not do anything at Butte Silver Bow. They're probably wanting to buy a business license, they should, but they probably won't, you know, they don't have to let, let planning and zoning know, they don't have to let anyone else in the courthouse know, they've licensed and made their arrangements with the state, they're legally operative, they're able to operate legally, uh, in the state, they can do what they want here in Butte Silver Bow, we understand that, I, when I attended the, the public meeting. On the west side, he was firmly believed that.
Freezing up again, Brendan.
Am I allowed now? Okay, so I'm just going to wrap it up, but, when I attended the neighborhood meeting on the west side, uh, almost the entire room felt that the council had knew about the home and disgusted the proposed Spirit House, even though it had no rec- uh, no recognition, uh, there was no formal communication, wasn't an action in front of the council, and we were not aware of it at all. I just think that it's good public policy, even for policymakers, to know what's happening in their own community, so that they can adjust and answer phone calls as they come in. I mean, the hate, the, the last thing I hated, uh, as a public servant, was to be caught off guard, because people believed that I was misrepresenting them and not telling the truth by saying I didn't know anything about it, when in reality, I didn't know anything about it, and I think that what we were asking for with the conditional use permit, shorted up that loophole, I'm not about discrimination, I'm about public information.
Hey, thank you. Any other Commissioners, have any, Commissioner Callahan?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer, uh, I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Olson, he was right, there are loopholes, but this resolution hasn't been drafted yet, we still haven't gone to the committee to ask County Attorney Joyce to put this together for us, there's a possibility, maybe she could put some language in there that we may, we might be able to close some of the loopholes, uh, I don't think shooting this down tonight, using that as an excuse, was a good reason to shoot this down, I think, I'm not sure what Commissioner Mankins, uh, communication, if he wants to move this on, or if he wants to vote on it tonight, but my recommendation would be, we go back to the committee, we get some language in there, we get both sides involved, there's very, very concerned people on both sides, let's get together and let's hash this out, and let's do something that's right for the community, and in the best interest of both sides, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson?
Thank, thank you, Chief Executive Palmer, um, that's kind of my, my take on, on it also, is that I believe that we have an issue, um, about knowing who's going to move into a, uh, what a, uh, residential treatment facility is going to move into a, a, uh, house in your neighborhood, I think that's a concern, there needs to be a way to maybe publicize that, I just don't think that this, that the conditional use permit is the right tool to get that done, and that's what I think is, we need to, um, get together and come up with a different we- a different way to skin this cap, and I just don't think that this ordinance, uh, as we're kind of heading down that path, will do it, uh, maybe, uh, County Attorney Joyce will be able to, uh, lead us in that direction, but we have a lot of potholes with, or, uh, a lot of, uh, holes we can fall into legally, and we just need to be very careful about that, um, I don't ha- I don't have a problem with, uh, continuing to look into the problem, I just don't think we're ready to, I'm not ready to vote on an ordinance tonight, or to send it, create an ordinance tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Fredrickson?
All right, thanks, Chief Executive Palmer, um, you know, I've been going back and forth with this for a while now, and, uh, you know, at this point, it's just mostly been listening and taking it all in, um, you know, I've heard from many sides on this issue, and, uh, I respect the amount of interest and concern about it, uh, the problem is that I'm receiving conflicting information, um, up until this point, and at this point, I can't tell if it's, if this is legally correct, uh- And at this point, I can't tell if it's, if this is legally correct, um, especially regarding foster homes. And I feel like I have no choice but to stick with the status quo until we figure out what steps we can take legally. And uh, I cannot in good conscience open the Silver Bow taxpayers um, up to an expensive legal battle. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, or does someone want to make a motion? Commissioner O'Neill?
There's just one one last deal on the on the going on litigation part of this and the the threats of being sued. Now, the only way that I see this would be sued is if we denied any of this, okay? Obviously, we we can't deny them. So how how are we discriminating if we're just adding another process to that? Um, I I don't need that answered, but I'm just making a point to that, that um, you know, the the first thing you can do is is say, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna sue the county on this if you guys change this ordinance. But if the ordinance is just another checks, check and balance um, for the safety of our community, and we still approve them, I'm still confused on how you can sue on that. We can, you know, we're, we're adding just one more, one more deal to be safe and let let our community know what's going on. Um, again, I'm not, that's just a comment more or less than a question, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mankins.
I'm gonna let Mr. Frederiksen speak on this, if Commissioner Frederiksen would like to.
I didn't see his hand. Commissioner Frederiksen.
Uh, thanks, Chief Executive Palmer, and thank you, Commissioner Mankins. And and I will say, I appreciate um, what you're doing with your constituents. I mean, clearly, um, they wanted you to do this, and it's it's nothing against you and and nothing personal. And just to Commissioner O'Neill's comment, and just in general, I have a really hard time um, creating an ordinance and creating policy that we can't enforce or can't do anything about. And, you know, I think it's been said pretty pretty well with the other commissioners. Um, we all know that we can't deny it, but to me, that's not, that doesn't solve any problems. And and so that's something that I've I've wrestled with um, for a while now, so. Um, but I I appreciate all the the work that you've you've put into it and and uh, like I said, it's nothing personal.
Okay, any further? Commissioner Mankins.
You know, at this time, I I don't know about the motion, but I mean, I have a motion, but at this time, I would like to, um, it seems like we were dropped a lot of information from about four oh six today until we probably put our pockets in seats. Um, Mr. Commissioner Frederiksen has made a great point that he doesn't know which way. He's had different people and different lawyers telling us a couple of different ways this can go. Um, I know that respectively, County Attorney Joyce has advised differently. But there's also been some other people that have come out throughout, and we all have known one of them, that have said that that's not always true. And it's just the way that you look at it and how you read into it. I know that Mr. Moni and some other people have delved into this and made some pretty good points. And I've brought this to a few different lawyers, and they read that same way. So it's, you know, and I think that County Attorney Joyce would say that it's just how you look at it in a difference of opinion. Um, I know that if we're not discriminating, which we had no intention to discriminate against anyone. At this, you know, with that being said, I mean, is it's, is it wrong of me to ask if, you know, the ruler of all rules is the Attorney General? Is that something that can be be asked? That we ask for the Attorney General to maybe give us a ruling and clarification? With some of our comments on, um, maybe a letter that our County Attorney Joyce could refract, and maybe some of your concerns that we could ask that, and possibly wait for that to make sure? Because I think there's enough out in our community right now that are asking to see possibly, can we have this transparency? Can we adopt this? Can we just help out one another? I mean, one of the big things is, I believe, we make progress when we apply our energy in how to accomplish something rather than explaining why it can't be done. We are talking about preserving and strengthening neighborhoods. Surely, that is worth the effort. I think we all agree that it's all worth the effort. So is that something, Chief Executive Palmer, that that could be asked of before? Because it seems like we look and everybody has some different opinions on things. I know at the beginning of this, not to call out Commissioner Olson, but he delves into some things, he read some things differently. I know that I've asked some other ones, we had a ten-two vote, some other people looked into this, and they're reading it differently too. And I look on my screen and I see very educated people. And I see one lawyer at this time, and our county attorney. And I see that, you know, that she advises that way, but when we ask out into the public, as Mr. Frederiksen has stated and other people have stated, that those lawyers see differently as well. So can't we just end all and ask for a letter to be drafted by our county attorney? And to the Attorney General's office for some clarification, and also add some of our comments or questions to make sure?
Yes, that was directed towards me, Commissioner Mankins, but um, I'm gonna have to rely on the County Attorney Joyce. I know we've had this discussion before on other issues, whether or not we could ask for an Attorney General's uh, opinion on certain things, and I know there are certain uh, steps that have to be taken. So County Attorney Joyce, would you like to answer?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Mankins. Um, an Attorney General's opinion can be requested by a county attorney, but I'm a bit confused as to what the question would be. I think that um, every attorney that has weighed in on this um, has stated that you can go ahead and require a conditional use permit to maintain a residential, community residential facility. The question is whether or not um, you should, and whether or not there's any legal implications in in doing so. Um, the Attorney General's not gonna answer that question. That's a question that this body has to decide whether or not this is something that is um, worthwhile pursuing, and whether or not there's any um, risk to passing such an ordinance. Um, I've laid out in my memo to the council what I see as the legal implications in doing so. And I would disagree with you that um, other attorneys have have given different advice to a certain extent in that um, all of the uh, different communities that um, Ms. Casey was able to look at, um, that were provided to this council as uh, communities that may use conditional use permit process for community residential facilities, um, don't treat different types of community residential facilities differently. They um, all have foster homes and and every other entity that's included in the definition of a community residential facility um, in their definition. So um, in terms of, you know, an Attorney General's opinion, I just don't know exactly what the the question would be. Um, if you're asking about whether or not, you know, the privacy interest is outweighed by the right to know, and that you could close some of these hearings for foster homes. Um, I would caution that it uh, seems inconsistent to determine that privacy interests um, for foster homes is outweighed by the, by the uh, the privacy interest outweighed by the right to know, but when you look at a transitional living facility, then the right to know is outweighed by the privacy. I just don't see how you can treat uh, different types differently, and I think that's where you're gonna run in into problems. Um, so I I just feel like if you have an ordinance, you have to treat every single type of community residential facility the same. You have to recognize that these are um, allowed in every residential facility, that it's been clearly stated by the Montana Supreme Court, that that's what they believe, that you can't discriminate. Um, and you need to be cautious of a challenge that if um, you are only looking at uh, these permits or looking more closely at these types of permits for transitional living type facilities, um, that those residents are protected by um, the American Disabilities Act and the Fair Housing Act. Um, so I think that you have to realize that when you're having a public hearing um, regarding whether or not to, or to listen to a uh, request to maintain a community residential facility and to um, provide the conditional use permit, you have to realize that what you're looking at is not who lives in the home, but the use of the home. And you have to analyze it in terms of zoning, which is all about use of property, not about who lives there. So I just don't understand, I guess, maybe you can clarify a little bit better for me what you would be asking the Attorney General to give an opinion upon.
Well, I'm. Commissioner Mankins.
Well, I mean, the question is that we've talked about is that, let me see, is that, I mean, that we've mentioned that can you treat fosters different from group homes? And the Attorney General will be, can you treat foster homes different than group homes? That's what is, it comes down to. And I mean, those are something that you could actually ask. And I mean, there's a different, there's several different questions once we're on this topic that everybody has these questions. And we just want clarification from, that we can go forward with this, because it seems like other cities don't mention foster homes. But as you implied, that they are included in group homes. I mean, those are something that really are things that in your letter that needs to be addressed from someone, if you're gonna exclude them or not include them, or if they're group homes or foster. I mean, we all have a bunch of questions, and I know that this is something that needs to be hashed out, seeing that we've win eleven months. I don't think drafting a letter, asking a few of these, would go an extra, I mean, another month. We've come this to actually hear from the Attorney General on this.
Any reply, County Attorney Joyce?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Mankins, I I'm not implying that other communities don't say that uh, foster homes are included in group home. I think that the links to those ordinances were provided to the commissioners. And you can read for yourself that they do in the definition of a group home, for instance, in Scobie, which was the one that um, commissioners were provided information on that said that they don't include foster homes. Their definition of a group home in the Scobie ordinance does include foster homes. And all of that information was provided to the commissioners. Um, so you can read those ordinances for yourself and see that foster homes are included in the other ordinances um, in the other cities. Uh, I don't, I don't know that it's worth writing a letter to the Attorney General, but I guess that's something that can be done.
And I think that that time it'd be a good idea. I mean, when you look through the foster, or not the foster, I take that back, sorry, County Attorney Joyce, that when you look through the the Scobie, Shelby, Miles City, Livingston, Belgrade, Bozeman, Missoula, Helena, Great Falls, Billings, and Calisville that was passed of, um, so many of them, if not all of them, um, do not allow in an R1. I mean, what are they talking about when they don't allow one in an R1? I mean, for example, that you have the definition, and you provided this, that Ms. Casey so graciously provided for us, that Livingston allows in an R2, R3, R2, MH. Um, but no R1. Um, Belgrade allowed in an R2 and an R4. What are they doing in R1? I mean, there's enough, I think that we've went through this several different times. I think there's enough out there and enough questions, that I know that I've talked to every commissioner um, about this. Not about this, but in general, over the eleven months I've had a conversation with. That probably could give one one question and make sure that we are doing the right thing for our taxpayers, for our citizens. I mean, we want to strengthen these neighborhoods, and we're trying to do that. And I know that Mr. Olson, Commissioner Olson stated, you know, how are we gonna know that who moves in or not move in? But I think that, you know, it's the right of the citizens, and we're only working for the citizens. You know, they elected me, they elected everybody up that I'm looking at. So is that something that is possible to do, Chief Executive Palmer?
I would imagine you can make a motion to request the county attorney or ask the county attorney to write a letter, but I guess this council would have to relay to her exactly what the question is gonna be. So maybe if this whole thing was, need to say it, held in committee until you come up with the properly drafted question, if that's the direction you want to go, uh, I guess it's up to the council. Commissioner Mankins.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. But Mr. Callahan has stated that, you know, that could be something that, you know, if we make a, you know, a motion to refer this back, as Commissioner Shea stated last week, if we refer this back to judiciary, that could be something that could be worked on in the meantime. That doesn't mean it's going to be passed, might correct or not correct on that. I mean, if it's referred back to judiciary to draft this letter, so we find out what is actually.
I guess you could refer it back to the committee or uh, or a letter to be drafted or for a compromise to be worked on, to come up with the legal solution to this and, you know, you. Trouble is, if you get five or six lawyers in the same room and ask the same question, you're gonna get five or six different answers or opinions. That's why I chose working with electricity. You touch a white wire or a black wire, you're gonna get one answer from all of them. Commissioner Fisher, haven't heard from you this evening?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Um, I see no reason to send a letter to the Attorney General. The rules, the state law, everything's pretty black and white. We've got decision to make. And um, we can either move this forward or kill it, and um, it's a decision we have to make. And to write a letter to the Attorney General, I don't see any any point in that. Um, if you want to pass this, let's pass it. The judiciary can start working on it. You want to kill it, let's kill it and bring something back new. But there's no sense in moving this thing and keep talking about it. I mean, we're three hours into it every week now, and um, I just think it's time that we man up, woman up, and um, make a decision here about what we want to do. We've heard from everybody. We've heard the same letters over and over and over, and it's time we make a decision. The county attorney knows the law. She's, no sense here calling the uh, Attorney General. She's told us where we're at and what we gotta do. If we want to do that, fine. If we want to buck the system, let's do that. But let's not drag this out no more. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson wanted to make a comment, I believe.
Uh, yes, I I I did. Uh, what would be the implications of? One of the things is that I agree with, is that we do need facilities that treat alcohol and uh, any chemical dependency. There there's a ton of it in our community. We need things that read it and programs for it. Uh, on the other hand, is an R1 neighborhood the best place to put it? Can we, and this I guess is a question for County Attorney Joyce, uh, what are the implications of holding these rules to certain areas? I imagine we could have a commercial area where we could put this, or industrial area where it wouldn't really affect anybody too terribly much. But when we're putting it in uh, an R1 residential neighborhood, it feels to me like it's kind of going against the zoning to begin with. And I believe that's probably when you look at a lot of these communities that that Mr. Mankins brought up. You know, they they do have limitations where these facilities can go and where they do hold this. And I think that's something that we've kind of. And I think that's something that we've kind of haven't really been focusing on, and I think that's where if we do bring this forward to an ordinance, we can have these discussions. And I think that's one of the key places where we need to look, is where these will be allowed and where they will not be allowed.
Is that, County Attorney Joyce?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Anderson, I think you need to understand that they are allowed, period, in all residential zones. That was part of what I tried to advise the council of in the Judiciary Committee during these discussions, and placed it all in writing in a memo that you should have received earlier today, but, you know, this Montana Supreme Court has said, there's absolutely no question that in Montana, a group home for eight or fewer people is a residence and may be located in any area in Montana zoned residential. Article 12, Section 3.3 of the Montana Constitution, Title 76, Chapter 2, Part 4 of the Montana Statutory Law and Case Law, make it clear that is, is, that is the rule in Montana. This court will not require community residential facilities to repeatedly defend their well-established right to locate in any residential area in Montana. So it's not a question about whether they should be allowed in R1, R2, and R3, whatever kind of residential zones we have in Butte, Silver Bow. They are allowed in all residential zones, period. The question is, you can request that there's a conditional use permit, the law allows you to authorize that that be part of the process, but you cannot deny it when you're having that public hearing on the conditional use permit. You are going to allow it, and you're going to allow it in a residential zone. You're just going to be looking at whether or not the use is, is appropriate for, for residential use, just like you would evaluate a residential use of any other residential property. And that is the frustration, I guess, with the law, because typically conditional use permits are discretionary, and they mean that there's, they're not usually allowed in this area, but you can go before zoning board to ask that they be allowed as a conditional use. But in this case, there, the discretionary nature of it is taken away. They are allowed, period.
Follow-up, Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much. In going on to that, are there other conditional uses that somebody could be denied for, say, home businesses? Difference, is there differences if I wanted to start a business, say, in my house? Would there be some instances where something would be allowed in residential one versus residential two versus residential three? Are there limitations other where in the code for different things? Say, I wanted to start a, I, I don't know, say, any kind of business in my home directly for profit? Would I be able to do that, or are there different limitations in other this?
Mr. Anderson, there are different limitations. I, I think Lori Casey is on the meeting, and maybe she could give you a little better answer to that, but yes, there are different zoning rules that don't apply to this particular issue, which is a community residential facility and how they're treated in state law.
I think the key issue, though, is the Supreme Court has a rule that you cannot deny those businesses in particular zones. A follow-up, if I could... Commissioner Anderson?
I think my main point, what I'm trying to make here, is that we have a corporation that is buying homes in our community for the purpose of making profit, where they're trying to maximize their profit. They're buying homes at a relatively cheap rate, rather large homes where they can cram as many people in, make as much money as possible, and the neighbors and everybody else, pardon my language, can simply go to hell because the way the law's set up protects them from this. And I don't think it's something, honestly, that this body can deal with. But I think when we go forward and research this and look at it, it kind of gives the state impetus and kind of forces them to take a better look at the law. One of the things is, is that unfortunately, there's a awful lot of things that the county or city, counties, governments cannot dictate to the state, unfortunately, because more often than not, and I brought this up a couple other times, with other things still on the agenda, mainly the really shoddy job they did of writing the law of the taxes on, rehabilitating taxes on a home. We have two precommunications on that because the state has done a piss poor job of putting together legislation. And if we can use our body to kind of help guide them at their hand and showing them the fault in what they're doing, I think it's a good idea and a good use of our time. Hopefully, it's something that our governing body, heading to Helena this coming January, can bring forth and say, hey, let's take a look at this. This is something that we're doing in our community, and we need this solved. Are we going to be able to solve it and fix it? No, probably not, but can we be a stepping stone to getting it done correctly? Yes, I firmly believe so, but in order for that to happen, we need to continue moving on forward with this process. And the reason why I bring that up is if I want to open up Business A in R1, I'm not allowed to. But if I want to open up Business 1 in R2 or R3, yes, it's allowed. So why is it that this is allowed par glance everywhere without any limitations, without any chance of denial or anything else? I think it's tremendously unjust. I think a lot of very powerful and rich people have put together a program where they're trying to ramp things down people's throats in the, or areas where they do not, where they have a lower property value, so they can do that. This is a bigger issue than what's before us, and I think it would behoove us to really look at it and give it a little bit more attention than I firmly believe it deserves. Thank you.
And I may want to call on Lori Casey, Department of State, to give some insight on the different zones and what restrictions are there, and try to answer Commissioner Anderson's questions. Lori, are you on?
I am, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Anderson, the answer to your question is, yes, there are different conditional use permits in each and every zone. The difference between this, the community residential facilities, and those type of conditional uses, is that they are protected under state law. As Chief Executive Palmer said, and also County Attorney Joyce, the Supreme Court has weighed in, but also the same law that we have been hearing about in a lot of the communications, Montana Code annotated 76-2-412, subsections 3 state. The facilities listed in subsection 1 and 2, which describe all the different community residential facilities that we've been talking about tonight, are permitted use in all residential zones, including but not limited to residential zones for single-family dwellings. So the R1 zone here in Butte, Silver Bow, is a single-family zone. So by state law, they are a permitted use. So that's the difference. We, we keep talking and saying these are businesses, but they, for the purpose of zoning, they're to be considered as a residential use. That's very clear in the state law. So that's the difference between that and other type of conditional uses that may be denied if they don't fit in to a particular zone.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Last comment, I promise, it's only one, but when the Bee rescue mission was closed, it was in District 8, it was in my district, I received a lot of feedback from a lot of neighbors in regards to the old rescue mission. I believe they had to go through two or three zoning variance applications for proposed sites, and it stayed in District 8. And I heard from a lot of, a lot of my constituents on the relocation, too, but I think everyone can admit after the fact that those public information sessions where the public was made aware of, and were given the correct information about what the actual plan was for the facility, you can see the results of the facility now, and it's probably more than they dreamed of, and it's probably more than the citizens of Butte could have imagined. Personally, I think it's in an ideal location. And I've, so I just think that, that the process or the practice of public information doesn't always lead to negative results. In fact, I think it more often than not leads to positive results. If people are made aware of what's going to happen in their neighborhood, they might be more receptive to the fact to help out than to tend to not, you know? It's the most generous community you're ever going to find anywhere. And once people are given the correct information, even with the Spirit House proposal...
Brendan, your pro's up again. A lot of reports, Navy services, doesn't always address... I'm just going to leave it with that. I think that public information can lead to more positive results than negative. And I think that the Bee rescue mission is the pinnacle example of how people rally and work together once they have the corrected issue. And I can speak from all sides, saying that, you know, it was in District 8, the former and the current new facilities in District 8, and I think that the process was very good. Very heated along the way, but I think it developed very positive results.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, my fellow commissioners and all the people that have spoken. We have researched, reviewed, and discussed this for eleven months. We need to make a decision. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher, for reminding us of that. What good is transparency, which I, not, there's not one person on this panel here that does not believe in transparency. We were elected to be that way. We are not to be living under a basket or a rock. We need to be transparent, and everybody else we expect to have is same, you know, courtesy. But what good is transparency if a conditional use permit cannot be denied? And if you have the right number and you have a permit, you can't be denied. And so all the others that fall through the cracks, we have no control over, like Commissioner Olson mentioned. And that is absolutely the truth. I, I really worry about giving people a false sense of security that this is going to change anything, really. I mean, it might call somebody on the carpet because you don't like the kind of their jib, like my mother used to say, but, you know, you call somebody on the carpet, and that's fine, and they, it's transparency. One, you know, like somebody else said, that public, you know, everything is public anymore. I mean, goodness, there's not anything that's private. So that's one thing. I do worry about giving a false impression to people that this is going to really change anything. Once we know who they are, then what? What do we do then? I mean, all we know is, yeah, that's who they are and that's what they're doing. But the thing that really bothers me the most is that we cannot ignore the warnings from the representatives from the federal government and the state government. We've got the Fair Housing Act, people that represent that giving us warnings, really, and the ADA. And we can't discriminate, and these are considered residences. I don't care if they're for profit or whatever, but the law says that they are residences. And we are putting ourselves in a position of potential discrimination and possible litigation, and that completely, the playing field is not level, in my opinion. So at this time, I would move to deny moving this proposed amendment to zoning forward and place this communication on file.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion made in second to deny the request in Communication 2020-258 and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Yeah, none? Will everyone please vote?
We're just waiting for the vote to come up, Mr. Chief Executive.
Okay, now, will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please report the vote?
Is it closed, Kathy? Kathy, is it closed? Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have six yes and six no.
Okay, I get the honors of breaking the tie. And I too think that probably best to place this one on file and move forward and do some more research if people are so inclined, and come up with a new request at a later date after coming up with a better compromise someplace along the line. This had been tied last week. Not for sure there would be something that came out of it, you know, some work back and forth, but it didn't happen. But this time, all vote yes, denied. Next, we'll go to Communication number two, number 2020-332. This is Gina Fleming, Realty Specialist, requesting Council of Commissioners for a briefing regarding the Forest Service, working towards a private property located in Highland Mountains, approximately fifteen miles south of Butte, Montana, in Silver Bow County. My field, seek land and program management for the Rocky Mountain Milk Foundation would like to brief the board. On the purchase of the Frisella property in Jan Bowie, acting District Ranger, would like to make an update on the status of the district ranger's position. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I segregated this communication as we have a couple of guests with us tonight that are here to do a brief presentation on, on their topic and, and what they wanted to discuss. So I see Mr. Mueller is here, if it's okay with you, I would call on him to, to give him the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive and the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners. I'll try to be very brief. Boy, you guys are really, really busy. We've got two reasons to come before you tonight, and that is, number one, just to inform you about activities in the county, a project that we're developing. I think you received probably a summary and a map from Gina Fleming and the Forest Service. Hopefully, you have that. And secondly, I'm going to describe, well, I'm going to describe the project and where we're at in the process, but secondly, after you hear the project described, if it's appropriate and proper protocol, it does help if the county can voice support for the project and even get a letter of support for the project. So those are the two, two things that we're doing. I think I might still be joined by Gina Fleming, Realty Specialist of the Forest Service, and Jan Bowie, the active District Ranger from the Forest Service. They were supposed to be on the call, too. They're probably here. So very quickly, this project is called the Moose Creek Acquisition. There's two properties. There's one that's 300 acres that's owned by willing landowners, the Frisella, and another property that's 160 acres that's owned by the Rosati family. These properties were listed for sale, everyone, and they were listed and actively being marketed by Western Ranch brokers. And we've got two willing landowners here. I'm working with the Frisella family, and the Forest Service is doing the other 160-acre project pretty much on their own. The Elk Foundation supports it and will help...
The Elk Foundation supports it and will help where we can. But sometimes, once in a while, projects like this come along, and they're private in holdings within the National Forest System, and in this case, the Beaverhead Deer Lodge National Forest. And the reason why we're coming to you so early in the process here, and I want to stress, this is very, very early in this project development. We have no deal. The properties are listed for sale, but we have willing landowners that we're working with. But why we're coming to you right now is because to do these projects, to get the funding for the Forest Service and the Elk Foundation to buy these two properties, we are proposing for land and water conservation funds for fiscal year 2021 to buy these properties. And it's really important to us to, of course, let the commissioners know about the project being developed in your county, in your backyard. And then, secondly, to get your support if that's possible, because that builds a stronger project competing for land and water conservation fund all around the country. So very quickly, I'm just going to speak about the 300 acres and why it's important to the Elk Foundation. And by the way, we have a great chapter with lots of members around Butte and in that area, and we sure look forward to getting back and getting together in person and having a banquet for wildlife conservation there again. But this property, this Moose Creek property, of course, we're looking at it because it's very high-quality habitat. It consists of, it's located in the Highland Mountains, and the Frisella family has asked the Elk Foundation and the Forest Service to help them conserve their 300-acre Moose Creek property, as I said, in the Highland Mountain Range. High-quality habitat, a lot of grass, meadows, wetland springs, Aspen groves, riparian areas. Really a nice piece of property for wildlife. It's important summer/winter rains for elk, deer, black bear, moose, big orange sheep, and many other, of course, species. There's a lot of springs and headwaters with Moose Creek on the property, and those are tributaries in the headwaters of Moose Creek that go in eventually into the big whole river. Moose Creek contains Yellowstone Cutthroat trout, hybridized with Western Cutthroat trout. And Montana Fish and Land Parks has supported this project, and they've identified this area as a candidate for reestablishing genetically pure strain of Western Cutthroat trout. It's also, we look at it as a public access project. This property would be open to the public and improve public access to surrounding public lands. And, you know, we'd be protecting a scenic public view shed that people can see from surrounding public lands and the Continental Divide National Trails nearby. This project, these are the kind of projects, we only look at a few of these around the state a year. The kind of projects we look for and we work with the Forest Service on are in holdings like this one. And you can see, these two properties are next to each other, and they're, for the most part, an inholding within the forest, ordered on three sites by the Forest Service. So the Elk Foundation, we're attempting to purchase this property. And the idea would, if the land and water conservation funds become available, everybody, then we would purchase that property, and the Forest Service would then purchase it from us, and it would become part of the Beaverhead Deer Lodge National Forest. So again, I just want to stress, we're coming to you really early. Just to let you know, we're working on these projects in the county. And, but there's no deal, the projects aren't expected to be finished, if everything goes right, until 2021. So as the public learns about these, know that it's still private property. We're working on getting the project finished. And right now, we're just looking for your endorsement and support and letting you know what's going on there. So with that, commissioners, I'll be available for questions, but I would turn it over to, with your permission, Chief Executive Officer to Gina or to the District Ranger, Jan. Thank you.
Jan is on the line, on the screen. So Jan, would you like to, or Gina, she just popped up too. So either one of you, whichever one would like to go first. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Gina Fleming. I'm a Realty Specialist with the U.S. Forest Service, Eastside Land Zone. And the primary area that I am assigned to is the Beaverhead Deer Lodge National Forest. I work on all types of land adjustments to include land exchanges, purchases, right-of-ways, donations, conveyances, and access issues. And I am fairly new to this position. I started in March. So I did just want to take a quick minute to introduce myself and let you guys know that you can contact me at any time at the Butte Ranger District if you have any questions or concerns about lands or access issues. Mike did a great job summaring the Moose Creek Acquisition. I'll talk a little bit about the Rosati Brownwell property. It's a smaller 160-acre portion that the Forest Service is purchasing without Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation. These properties sit in the headwaters of the Moose Creek Drainage in the Highland Mountains. They sit at about 7,000 feet with willow riparian bottom lands, open meadows, and forested lodge pulpine hill slopes that look up towards the scenic Red Mountain. They're just really nice properties. The middle fork of Moose Creek, Moose Creek, and an unnamed tributary flow through the Rosati property, creating 1.2 acres of wetlands and 17.5 acres of riparian habitat. These properties were homestead entry surveys. They were patented out between 1911 and 1916. So there's been no mining activity on the properties. They're clean. The Forest Service wants to purchase these properties for the following benefits: to prevent development causing negative impacts to wildlife habitat, scenic values, and water quality; to provide increased recreation and access opportunities; to protect the Moose Creek watershed; to protect and secure wildlife and riparian habitat; to eliminate boundary management issues; and to eliminate a large inholding, allowing for more efficient and effective land management practices. I know counties are always worried about losing tax base. Currently, the Rosati family pays about $144 per year in taxes, and Frisella pays about $388. So that's a total of $532. And then the counties do receive payment in lieu of taxes or a PIL payment yearly for their acres of federal land that lie within the county. And this year, Butte-Silver Bowe County received $580,639 for a total acreage of federal land at 234.62. And if this property meets the criteria and is PIL eligible, then the land would be added to the total acreage for the county and would be reported to the Department of Interior for the fiscal year 2022 PIL payment calculation. So, thank you, Chief Executive and the Council of Commissioners for adding us to your agenda. The Forest Service in cooperation with Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation is working hard to secure these properties, and we respectfully request your support for the acquisition. And unless there's any questions, I will turn it over to Jan Bowie, our acting District Ranger.
Well, we'll go to Jan and some more questions. Go ahead, Jan. You're on mute, Jan. There you go.
Okay, sorry, I was having technical challenges, and I've been having those all day, so I apologize sincerely. Thank you very much for hosting us this evening. I suspect it has felt like kind of a revolving door for District Rangers in the past year in Butte. That would be highly accurate. So I'm number four in less than a year. And I will remain in this position until we fill that position permanently, hopefully sometime before Thanksgiving. So we are hoping to get a permanent position filled in Butte in the long term. And you've just got me holding things together in the interim. I appreciate your time tonight. I think the prior folks have done a great job of explaining this proposal. We would appreciate your support, if it's something you're willing to support. That does help us leverage the land and water conservation funds. Those are national funds that were recently actually passed with great support from congressional staffers, well, and our congressional folks on both sides of the aisle. And we use them a lot, but we do have to compete nationally. And if we have local support, it just makes us more competitive for those funds. But I will emphasize that that is strictly up to the commissioner's discretion. And unless you have questions, I think we can be silent and allow you to move on with your meeting tonight. Thank you very much.
We'd like to ask Gina one question. And you said that the estimated PIL payment is about $589,000 now. Do you have an estimate what it would be with the added acreage?
I do not, Chief Executive Palmer. I tried to ask that question, and it's pretty hard to figure out. There's a lot of formulas that go into it. It's also a payment that's appropriated by Congress, so it's not guaranteed to be there from year to year. All I know is that it would be a percentage. It would be added to the existing acreage, you know, which is not going to be, it's not going to increase the percentage by a lot, but some.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bolton?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I just have a couple, or one question. So I've been on the council quite a while now, and it seems like we've had similar things like this come up, and a lot of people, some people panic at the word wilderness and land closures and that type of stuff. And I'm assuming you guys have heard all of that. But as far as this goes, right now, is there any recreation that we need to be aware of, that people will be disputing if this is closed? I believe since it's private, probably not. But just, I was curious about what the process for that is going to be.
Okay, so let me tack into that just a bit. So if the land is acquired as national forest, and that is the first step, then it would be incorporated into the management of the surrounding land, which would limit vehicle use to the existing roads. And there is an existing road that goes through that property. And it would be open to things like camping and hunting and fishing, those normal activities. Now, if there was something that came up in the future, wilderness is a congressional decision. And quite frankly, the Forest Service doesn't have a whole lot of influence in that. Congress makes that decision for us. Or in Montana, it would appear that they don't make that decision for us. But they might eventually make that decision. We have very little influence on that. Although the presence of a road theoretically should make it ineligible. And if it was decided to eventually close that road or provide additional roads, that would go through a public analysis and comment process before that decision was made. So the existing road would remain open until the agency made another decision following a public comment process.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Chief Executive, and welcome, everyone, from the Elk Foundation and the Forest Service. This is a property in my district. And just to let you know, you've given away my secret hunting area, too. I actually, when I was doing more hunting, had a hunting partner, I actually was up in this area, and we used to call it Squeaky Tree because the trees would squeak when the wind blew. But anyway, I fully support this. I think it's great. There's a wilderness study area, the Pumbo Spires to the west of that area. It's been a wilderness study area for who knows how long, and it still hasn't become a wilderness study area, or wilderness area. I think this is an excellent acquisition, if you can get it done, and keep the moose and the elk and the deer, deer is a lot of playing up there. Thank you very much. I support this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you for the info. It's a great area up there. Do you have an appraised value or estimated value of this property?
We have just recently submitted both these properties for an appraisal request. It's going to be a staff appraisal from our Forest Service personnel, and they are just putting it together now. So not yet, but it's in the works.
Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Hoping to end the evening on something we can all agree on. I know that we've done letters of support, the class to support initiatives, and I know that they're asking for our support. And I think the addition of public lands is a no-brainer in Silver Bow County or in the state of Montana. So I don't know, the body up for asking Chairman Morgan to draft a letter or Chief Executive Palmer, and we have the chief sign it or the chief and the council together sign it. I'd like to see some official written support from the body.
I'll second that, probably.
I'll make that a motion, but I see Commissioner Morgan, so I'll let the chairman speak.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This communication before us just simply asks for a presentation, so the body can't take action on drafting any letters. That would take a separate communication. Commissioner McDonough, I agree with you. It's just something we have to do later down the road. So, my two cents.
Okay. Want to follow up with your two cents and make a motion for the communication?
I just want to thank everybody for, you know, this long night and waiting to give a presentation. This is a good thing, and I look forward to reading and seeing this later as you guys get everything to fruition. So at this time, don't take it personal. I'll make a motion that we place Communication 2020-332 on file.
Second.
Here we have a motion made in second to place Communication number 2020-332 on file. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner McDonough?
Can we ask our esteemed representatives on the meeting who's stuck in all of this tonight to put in a request for the Butte-Silver Bowe Council of Commissioners to put in writing our support for your initiative?
Yes, this is Gina Fleming, and we will get that request into you guys as soon as possible. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Anything further on the question? All those, everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. It looks like we have 12 yays, zero nays.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to Communication number nine. Communication number 2020-340. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to approve and authorize the Chief Executive to sign the Notice of War, Notice to Proceed, an Agreement Form for the Hanson Road, Mertford Street Rehab. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. The question I have on this is, at the time, there was an estimate, I think it was gas tax money, it was about $822,000. The Gilman bid committed about $598,500 or something. There's an excess there of about $225,000. I asked at that time if we'd be able to use that on another project. I'm wondering if we have another project in mind.
They're looking at, Commissioner Fisher, they are looking at several projects, but they are, there's a process that has to go through. We have to submit the project, proposed projects, to the state to get the approval first. And I believe Public Works Director has come up with a couple of projects, and Mark Neary's on screen now, and maybe he can answer the question a little bit better.
Thank you.
Mr. Neary?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer and Commissioner Fisher. We did inquire right away, and we're hoping to maybe amend the contract and add this excess money to the project right away. But there's a process that we do have to go through, and we are looking into that now, and hopefully we'll be able to spend that money on that project.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you once again, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, Mr. Neary.
Thank you, Mr. Neary. This gas tax money, if I recall, isn't this kind of a time restraint where we got to use this money in a certain period of time or such, or no?
Mr. Neary, would you like to answer?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Commissioner Fisher, we have carried these over as long as we just keep in contact with the state about it. As a matter of fact, Hill, Hanson, and Mercury were all one project together, but then we couldn't do it, and then we carried it over to the next year. So we will not lose the money, I think, if that's what your question is.
Thank you, Chief Executive. Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, Mr. Neary. Just as a final comment, as you know, major concern in Butte Silver Bow is the roads. So if we have $225,000, I would like to see it put to use as soon as possible. I see this year, we don't have the asphalt plan running yet, so I would like to see that money put on the ground. Thank you.
Mr. Neary.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Commissioner Fisher, we do have the plant running this year. We haven't done any large, large projects, but we did Elizabeth Warren, and we've done quite a bit of patching out of the plant.
Thank you, Mr. Neary. I appreciate your service. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Mr. Chief Executive, I'll make a motion that we concur with Communication 2020-340 and place on file.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to concur in the request in Communication 2020-340 and place Communication on file. Is there anything on the question?
Thank you, John Morgan.
Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have 12 yays, zero nays.
Motion carries. And next, we are going to do the one we suspended the rules for, Communication 2020-349. This is a Communication from Public Works Director Mark Neary requesting Council authorize the Chief Executive to sign two agreements with Northwest Energy for the construction of gas lines for the bus wash and bus garage at the new location for the city, county of Butte Silver Bow, Montana County shop. This Communication. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I make a motion that we approve Communication 2020-349 and place on files.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to concur in the request in Communication 2020-349 and place Communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. I noticed on the check run tonight that we had a Northwestern Energy bill for in the excess of $20,000 for running something to the bus barn and the bus wash and stuff. Is this a separate deal?
Mr. Neary.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Commissioner Fisher, the $20,000 one was for the electrical, and the $5,000 one that we're talking about here was for the gas, so just two separate contracts.
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Thank you, Mr. Neary.
Anything further on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like we have 12 yays, zero nays.
Motion carries. And next, we'll go to Section Three, Ordinances and Resolutions, referred to Judiciary. Number one, Resolution Number 2020-45. Next is Section Four, Ordinances and Resolutions, Suspension of the Rules, and final passage for Resolution Number 2020-51. That's it. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council Resolution 2020-51 by waiving subsection seven of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 2020-51. Oh, no, this is just to suspend the rules. We have a motion made and seconded to suspend the rules for passing Council Resolution 2020-51 without reference to Judiciary. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone, Commissioner Olson.
Should we change the title of what we're voting on? Because it says Resolution 2020-51.
Yeah, it should be changed to Suspension of the Rules. Pass.
Commissioner Olson, you just had to ask, didn't you?
Well, I had to stir things up. I didn't want to have to go to another baker's dozen vote that we had to have earlier this evening, so.
That's right. All right, Mr. Chief Executive, the poll is up.
Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, I need one more person to vote. And it's not me, I don't think. Could everyone please make sure they made a selection and hit submit?
I mailed mine in.
Kathy, you don't know who it is, do you? Can you close it and then see if you can tell?
I tried to vote twice, but it won't let me.
Was Commissioner Anderson the one that didn't show up, too?
Mr. Chief Executive, we're looking into it now. Looks like Mr. Callahan is the culprit.
Commissioner Callahan, how did you vote? You voted yes.
Okay, so Mr. Chief Executive, with that, it would be 12 yays, zero nays.
Okay, motion carries. So we'll go to Resolution Number 2020-51, Resolution setting the 2021 fiscal year annual salaries, Chief Executive, County Attorney, Sheriff, Clerk and Recorder, Frazier, Assessor, City Judge, Justice of the Peace, Auditor, Superintendent of Schools, Clerk of the District Court, Honor, Members of the County Commissioners, Council of Commissioners, and providing for an effective date hearing. Commissioner Morgan.
Mr. Chief Executive, I would just ask that we make a correction in the title to say County of Commissioners instead of Counton of Commissioners. Would that be?
I think it's supposed to be Council.
Oh, Council of Commissioners. Forgot who I was for a minute. So I'll make a motion that we place Resolution 2020-51 on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length, as the title amended.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass Council Resolution 2020-51 on final reading with the amendment. That's no good. Anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Mr. Chief Executive, we're just waiting for one more. Commissioner Callahan, what's your status?
You voted yes.
We'll close and see if. Commissioner Anderson, you're the lucky winner. Please state how you voted.
I voted negative.
Negative. So Mr. Chief Executive, 11 yays, one nay.
Motion carries. Next, we go to public comment on any public matter not on the agenda.
Mr. Chief Executive, I do have one comment to read into the record. This one is from Faith the Way. Please require most voters to vote in person for the November election. It is very important election. Absentee ballots are okay, but mailing paper ballots to everyone is a bad system. It's too vulnerable to corruption. Other areas have had problems with that system, like not getting all the ballots back on time. They had votes sent to dogs and to dead people. Discarded votes could be turned in by the wrong person. I will give you references, and there's some websites attached to it as well. So that's all I have, and we'll go to the phone lines. And right now, Mr. Chief Executive, there's nobody on the phone.
No phone calls, so. Commissioner Morgan, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chief Executive, it looks like.
Commissioner Sorge, waving. Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'm going to break rules for a second. I just want to say thank you for the rest of the Commissioners. Tonight was kind of a very hard and contentious night for all of us. I really want to thank everybody for remaining civil and respectful to everybody's opinion, and I do respect the hard work that's been put into us. So again, thank you.
Good man.
He's Eric.
Commissioner Anderson, do you have your hand up?
I do. I would just like to just take a moment and also break procedure, but the community lost one of our finer folks the other day in the passing of Bobby Torvich, who served as sheriff for quite a while in our community. And I would just like to take this opportunity as a public thank you to him and his time of service, and just remember all the good and hard work that he did for our community. And just kind of acknowledge that on the record. I wish we would have, and just the community to remember him and his family in this time and their thoughts and prayers and everything. So I just wanted to put that out there for everyone and to say thank you to him on the other side for all his work and dedication to our community.
I agree. Thank you, Bill.
Mr. Chief Executive, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hoes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.